Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for these house signs and their community and everyone affected by that train wreck. Please take your seats. Roll call please.
Brochus.
Here.
Reichner.
Barnhart.
Here.
Martina.
Here.
Ister.
Here.
Alright, there was an executive session held prior to this council meeting in regards to personnel. Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Public comment on agenda items at this time? Okay, unfinished business, there is one thing, the steam innovation slash using of the city logo. Our solicitor is going to reach out to them about that, so that's the unfinished business. There is new business, first the purchasing of AED machines and also the choking, to prevent the choking device.
Choking, hold up, tell me what it's called.
Yeah, what's it specifically called?
It's just called a choking rescue device.
The choking rescue device. I make the motion to purchase six of those AED machines along with the prevention choking devices for the locations of the DPW building, City Hall, the OPG softball field, the ice skating rink, and the baseball concession stand at private grants up to the amount of $12,000. Do I have a second?
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes. Councilman Barnhart?
I make the motion to convert 59 North 4th Street from commercial back to residential.
Second.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Councilman Martina?
In your package you have an invoice for the purchase of the mar and like to make a motion that we get that when we're purchased.
Second.
Ister?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Councilman Ister, event trailer?
Yes, I'd like to table that Mr. Mayor until next meeting.
Alright, I second cabling it.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
And then Councilman Ister, Randy Buhner?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to put her on the rec board. She originally turned her paperwork in and it was an oversight and I wanted to correct that error in our part, so I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Reichner?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes. Councilman Reichner, vouchers and invoices.
Okay, we have $129,321.98 of expenditures from this general fund. I make a motion to pay those bills.
Councilman Reichner, was, just a question, I called down today to remove two checks, table invoices. Anyone make sure that's how it was corrected?
I have no idea.
Okay, alright, fun.
But this was, this was as of Friday.
Yeah, I know, I think checks were cut and then the response canceled today.
Okay.
So I called down to probably the pool of the check.
Whatever was your Friday is what this money was.
Okay, just want to make sure that the council works.
I'll check with Kevin and find out.
Okay, it's only for like $600, just want to make sure that you got it on there.
I'll second.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Discussion items, parking meter updates, chief?
Yeah, so I sent everybody an email today, we did get the proofs of the signs. We decided that the parking lot ones, what it's going to say on the meters is basically going to say meter because of Market Street, that'd be the 100 blocks, it'd be like meter or Market 1, Market 2, Market 3, that would be the block. The side streets, 4th, 5th, 3rd, and 6th, and 2nd will have accordingly the second street parking. So those signs should be coming once we approve those, the rest of the proofs. We did have some discussion on parking lot permits, Kevin was, I thought Kevin was going to be able to discuss that. I know I talked to Councilman Reichner about this. I didn't know if he wanted to elaborate anymore on how we're doing permits for parking lots compared to meters. I know there was a discussion on, we just didn't ever.
I would recommend that we sit down together effectively, I don't care who's here, you, Kevin, and, and.
Get straight down.
We're all on the same page.
Okay.
And the other thing, while we're at the same thing, I think was also discussed that a certain percentage is going to be pulled out of the meter fund or ticket fund on an annual basis to put into a separate account for making repairs on the parking lots as need.
Parking lots? I, that's not, I'm sure guys have heard of that one.
So we can also discuss that at least.
But that's what it come out of, what your meter funds, what your collections are.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about before about the, the collection has to pay for, basically, you know, has to pay for the FTEs meter and the software we have to pay for every year, basically meter versed and then the rest of the budgets and the general funds or whatever you want to take out.
Yeah, whatever, we're going to figure out what we're going to take out of that and put into the thing, but we want to try and create a reserve to work on the parking lots.
Yep.
Excellent, that's fine. And the other thing is we talked about some of the permit fees, some of them don't make sense and I, there was some discussion on that. But at the end of the year, once we talk about that, at the end of the year, the permit fees will be adjusted to make sure they kind of, they're in line with every, every permit, so we're going to make sure they're in line and correct. What's there this year is there this year. That should be coming up soon, there's also a feature on there after this, after we get things rolling that businesses can actually go in and purchase ads and stuff like that on, so when somebody does pull up the app that they want to, text to pay, that stuff comes up, you know, they can, they can issue their own permits on the business. You know, click on this to get a discount, stuff like that, so we'll look at that later on.
There's another question on, on the parking meters that I think would need to be addressed with the meeting of, of, of.
Yeah, we'll get together and we'll just see if things happen.
Alright, awesome.
But that should be happening soon.
Alright. Fee schedule, I know last council meeting there was some discussion of the different fees of the different parks and using of the facilities. I know a big discussion was on the ball fields up there. I did talk with Carl, because obviously him and Cam, you're up there once seeing basically what goes on up there, especially being the pool open, and I asked them what their input was. I know Carl had a couple suggestions saying we could charge an amount per field, per game, for example, whether it includes lights or not including lights, because Councilman Reich, you probably better understand what it costs to run those lights in the evening. Obviously, it's not a free thing to do.
Well, yeah, it's, and it, the lights are pretty much, pretty close to a quarter million dollars a year.
Yeah, so we got to help.
Streetlights and everything is what we're paying. And we started, it was a lot more, when we went to the LEDs, it brought it down, but it's still close to a quarter million dollars a year.
With our PPNL bills, but Carl had a suggestion we could charge per game, depending how many games they want to play, or we could have a blanket fee for like, if they want to do it for the day, it's up to them. Maybe we don't have that exact number, these are just ideas to throw out there, if you want to do just a blanket fee, let's just say, for example, Brad wants to have a police softball tournament, for example. So like, they can either say, we want 10, we want 10 fields, or we want to play a blanket fee to use the entire complex. So those are just some ideas out there, we need to decide what we want to do. And obviously, you know, you need garbage bags, picnic tables, the spiders, whatever, there has to be some type of fee to cover the cost of, you know, people, the city workers bringing that up and bringing it down. So those are just some thoughts on, I know Carl has a more broken down list of like, you know, what garbage bags cost or what a spider costs to rent, not to rent, speaking to use, so more details there. But I didn't know if anybody wanted to have, put any other more input on how they think the fee schedule should be broken down for the different types of facilities.
I do think it's something that if we're going to do it, we need to meet with certain people and get together with everybody that does use.
Yeah.
So that everybody's on the same page with it, because.
Yeah.
It does get used a lot.
Oh yeah, because obviously we can go later on, like, there's many events that get used throughout the city properties. So, not just the ball field, but all city properties, so.
Right, and it has to be fair to everyone.
Correct, yes, yes, so that was just, just a little bit more of an update with some ideas being bounced out there. Does anybody else have any ideas upon that topic? Alright, Jim, you, are you, any ideas, or are you just laying low right now, just soaking it all in?
Yeah, I'm laying low, I'd like to be excused, Mr. Mayor, just make a rest here.
Alright, you take care of yourself now, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, bye bye. Firework ordinance, I know last meeting that there were two different options. I know Joel explained how one option allowed some, one option didn't allow any. So I didn't know if Joel wanted to chime in with any opinion or chief or anyone else with any comments or concerns.
Actually, yeah, the, just to be clear, the state has, in the last several months, enacted new rules regarding fireworks within the use, or within the confines of cities in Pennsylvania. And there are some very, very stringent rules as far as where, when, how you can use fireworks within city boundaries. One would be that, you know, you can't use them on any city-owned property, you can't use them within so many feet of a dwelling, you can't use them within so many feet of a place that sells them. So the bottom line is, Summery is going to be one of all the cities in Pennsylvania that is either going to have no fireworks within the city limits or very limited fireworks within the city limits. And that is obviously council's call. I have prepared ordinances in both, just so they can review them for both circumstances, whether or not they want to allow them as is allowed under the state law or they want to ban them is, as is also suggested under the state law. The only reason I really am speaking up at this point is I kind of wanted to put the chief on the spot, and I didn't talk about this ahead of time, chief, but I figure the police department may have a opinion or an opinion of which road to take as far as fireworks.
Yeah, I think what they're talking about, when they talk about display fireworks, they're talking about the big ones.
Right.
They're not talking about your street ones where the kids are out there like little cannons off, stuff like that. They're not talking about those little ones, those are okay, those are.
My understanding is everything except sparklers and those ones they throw down, do they?
Now, from what I, when I read, when I was reading into it, I think that when they're talking about display fire, we're talking about those little ones, they can shoot them off.
Okay.
Or they're not really concerned about those. What they're concerned about are the ones that are, were made legal in Pennsylvania that you can shoot off through a tube, stuff like that. Those are the ones that you have to do within 150 feet of a property, this and that. I mean, either way, people are going to do it around the holidays, around those, over the July holidays. And it is somewhat chaotic for us to 100%, we will not be able to 100% enforce the no fireworks order. We just, there's not enough bodies, not enough time in the, in the evening to do that. So I think last year, I know when we spoke of it and we put some dates and times in, we ended up putting, you know, you could do it this time, although you still have to abide by the law. And if, you know, something happens, which we had an incident happen, you know, we can be charged accordingly or cited or arrested, no matter what you want to say. So I think to ban them completely, just basically you're going to run my officers ragged. They're just not going to be able to keep up with it, they're just not. And I'm not trying to, not to say that they can't do their job, it's just, it's too much. So I would say that people just have to understand that if you are caught and you, you know, you're, you're going to be charged.
Well, just to be clear, the consumer fireworks, you're talking about the display fireworks, which are the ones that get shot out of tubes.
Right.
And those you actually have to have a license now and all that stuff.
Correct, correct.
But for any, anything other than spark handheld sparkling devices or toy caps, you also must have a permit, so that's those little ones you're talking about.
Yeah.
You have to have a permit, you can't use them within so many feet, 150 feet of a home or 300 feet of a commercial business, all kinds of other things, so either way, there's a lot of restrictions. My only concern was, is it easier for you to enforce none than it is to enforce?
Well, I'm saying, if you say none, we're going to do it and then we're going to be.
Well, I'm saying, you're going to check the rhythm.
Let's, let's put it the example, the example is, it's the same thing that the city does with the outside beverage ordinance. The state has a law, the city has an ordinance, the city decides to say, hey, we're going to allow this now, and you, there are still restrictions on that, you can't be falling down the rung, you can't.
Be responsible.
You have to be responsible, so due to fireworks, you got to be responsible. If you're not responsible, you're going to have to, you know, pay the consequences of possibly being charged or cited for it. So that's kind of the example I kind of use there, Joel, so.
No, I understand what you're saying, and maybe I should look into that, it would be okay if council, if I research whether we are allowed to take that, or that stance where we're lenient with the use of fireworks. I'm not sure that that's allowed under the law, and if it isn't, our insurance won't cover us, if there's a problem. But if it's, if we're allowed to do that like we did with the alcohol, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I think, I think you still put the restrictions on that because you have, and as in addition to what the state says, you know a lot of those rules, you're possibly be cited.
Thanks, officer.
Is that it, is that it gentlemen? Any questions? Uh, Councilman Barnhart, you're up.
Hey, one question about Summery's celebration fireworks, is that going to be an issue? We set them off of.
Those people have to be licensed.
They are, we set them off of a chief, but.
Yeah, they'll do it.
Yeah, alright. Councilman Barnhart?
The Summery Summer Kickoff, I was thinking maybe a committee ought to be formed out of Parks and Rec, because I know one person or two takes, takes a lot of pressure off one or two people.
Well, I mean, we have two other city events we didn't have committees for, like we had National Night Out, we had New Year's Eve, we didn't have a committee for them, it's just, you know, you show up on a volunteer basis, because, you know, for New Year's Eve, I mean, we had meetings starting in September, we started with a full room, and then by the end of it, there was only two or three of us in the room at the end of the night. And then when it came to setting up, there was only two or three of us once again, and when it came to cleanup, there was only two of us.
Well, I just look at, like, Jill Lynn runs a ragged, she, and I think that.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I'm not disagree, but why don't we just keep it on a volunteer basis, like, you show up when you can, if you can't show up, because when you're on the committee, you're committed to show up all the time, and then this say, this is your part to play, and you don't show up, then you're letting the rest of the team down. I mean, if you're a volunteer, at that point, you know, you're working together, so I'm, I'm like, I'm not against. I say, I am against having a committee, because I know what committees do, not, I'm not against it, but like, we don't have committees for our other two city events, why do we need one for this one? I mean, no one was concerned about New Year's Eve when we had a run ragged, no one was concerned about National Night, now the album are running ragged, so why are we concerned now for Summery Summer Kickoff, now we're worried about us running ragged?
That, that's why I'm concerned, because of what happened New Year's Eve.
Well, what happened New Year's Eve?
Well, well, I'm just.
I'm not trying to be rude, don't take this the wrong way, but you weren't there for it. I mean, you weren't outside with us, you didn't help set up, tear down.
Well.
I know you were doing your own event, but.
If you had, if you advertised and say, hey, we're looking for volunteers to help, but I didn't see anybody, I didn't see any signs, I didn't see anything advertised, we need volunteers for this, I didn't see anything published. If there was, I missed it, but I didn't say, hey, we're having a New Year's Eve or we're having National Night Out, we need volunteers to help, I didn't see that, if I missed it, I'm.
Well, we can put it now, like, we're going to say we need volunteers, we can do it now, so there are volunteers, but to form another committee is like, it's just the same thing as having the volunteers show up. So I mean, what's the committee going to do that the volunteers can't do, and when you can show up when you can?
Be organized, for one thing.
Well, I don't, I mean, were the other two events not organized?
Well, that's what I'm saying, though, they, they, it just seemed like one person is, is doing it and running it, and it just seems to take away from the duties that, that you should have, and then you're doing other stuff when you shouldn't be doing the duties.
So you're, so Councilman Barnhart, you're, so you're saying that the duties of National Night Out and New Year's Eve are taken away from city employees, and they were doing those events instead of their duties?
Do you, do you think it was during working hours, do you think it was?
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a city-sponsored event that's being put on by the city, and if we want to get technical, never mind not going down that route, but I'm against to having the committee, like, we're going to have, I want to announce later on when the first, when the first event is taking place, I mean, excuse me, the first meeting is taking place. So then we'll see how dedicated everyone is, because back in September, as Slade, Slade was in that meeting, how many people were in there in the beginning, and by the end of December, how many people actually showed up? There's only like three or four of us, so everybody starts off gung ho, then when it comes time to tearing up, setting down. I'll tell you one thing, John, I'm not pointing you out, I'm just saying, from the experience of New Year's Eve, New Year's Eve Day, when everyone's home relaxing, guess who was out in the park? Jill Lynn, I, her husband, and her brother, no one else showed up. Not saying they had to, but that's the responsibility that we take on in these positions to do, put these events on. So if anybody wants to volunteer, we, we take you with open arms, we take full suggestions to do anything to make the event better. So let's see who shows up to the first meeting, and then we can go from there, how's that sound?
It's your story, call it like you want.
That's right, but Councilman Barnhart, you're up again.
Dump, dumpsters. After thinking about it, I thought, you know, to charge them a fee, that might be. Actually, all we want to do with the dumpsters is we want to know who has it, where you're getting it from, and where you're going to put it. So emergency, what happens, they have to move the dumpster, and if you're not sure where to put it, committee code will be direct where you should put it. So it's, it's just, because sometimes it just blocks these alleys, and, did you want to elaborate on that?
Times, are we going to need time limits on it or no?
Oh yeah, there's going to be time limits on it also, yeah, so it's not out there for three or four months.
You're still up, Councilman Barnhart, keep on going.
For what?
You're popular tonight.
Oh yeah. I, I left the table property management till I have time to talk to solicitor and get things going.
Sounds good.
And make a motion to table it.
Well, it's only a discussion, so no, no motion either.
Alright.
Keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
Event coordinator, Slade, Lenny, would you guys like to talk about the event coordinators, how you guys are doing?
Basically, what that position is, we're just going to get the papers, check the dates, make sure there's not multiple events happening the same day, close, in close proximity of each other, and then turn it over to Jimmy and have him sign off on it, make sure everybody knows about closing the streets if you want to close the streets, getting hold of the fire police, paying the fees for the garbage bags or whatever, all that. But, you know, I mean, it should actually go back to the Parks and Rec Committee and let them take care of it, because that's Jimmy's department, that's Jimmy's committee, and that's what it's for, Parks and Rec. You know, I mean, I'm fine with either way, there is a process, you draw up the application, anybody that has dates in mind, that you already gave to Jill Lynn, more than likely, you're still going to stay the same, nothing's going to change like that. It's just.
Are you guys still using our same form, or do you guys create a new?
No, no, we're basically the same form.
Okay, just so we were aware, because people were, wanted to turn stuff in, we weren't sure if you were, new form created or not. There was just one thing that was added to the form, that was it, and it was just if it was a new event or if, and how long that event has been going on, if it's a past event. So that was the only thing that was added to the form. I can't really say too much, because Jim isn't here to, I mean, he's out, but that was something that I had a discussion with him about, and.
And the fee schedules, we pretty much all agree on that.
Yeah, and he, he agreed that it was more of a Parks and Rec thing than it was, than anything else, that it should go back to Parks and Rec.
How long are you going to be picking up and getting Jimmy to sign?
We can look at them multiple times a week, check and see if there's anything. You know, and then give them to him, and he's in there every day, so it wouldn't be hard to get him to sign off on it.
So what you guys are saying is you're taking that responsibility, we'll say, out of the mayor's office and throwing it back on Parks and Rec for the approval, the date, making sure.
That's up to you guys in this time, we don't want to get in the middle of this.
It's hard to say that, because that's, that's Jim's department, so I mean, we have.
Yeah, that's up to you guys.
So what, what did he express when you asked him, because?
Well, no, 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 I'm not going to speak on behalf of Jim.
No, but.
Just talk to him, that's the best thing, I don't want to be in the middle of all this.
No, he wasn't, no, the reason why I ask, because like, since we last met last Monday, like, people were bringing applications in, we're saying, hey, hold up, hold up for the process, so.
I, I mean, I would accept them, and then, and then Jimmy can say, I'll sign off on them, or he can, you know, whatever he wants to do, because it's his department, I don't want to be in the middle of all this, I just thought I was helping out, that's all.
And, you know, so you talk to Jimmy, what he wants to do, my understanding is it's going to go back to the Parks and Rec,
they'll be looked at daily, signed off daily, it'll be basically the same process that was in place. And just a little more, little more guidance, I guess.
And just out of curiosity, you said it makes sure events were not too close together in proximity, so what, in your opinion, is too close?
Like a block away doing the same thing.
No, like just same day, doing the same thing.
Yeah, but same thing, yeah, same thing, same day.
So like, for example, say there's something down at the riverfront, something at the pool, is that okay?
Well, that's like two heads of town.
Well, I'm just curious, because these are, these are questions that we're going to get asked, and we, until we have the answers to.
But that's, that's why, like, if it becomes a Parks and Rec thing, then that's something that, you know, that Parks and Rec can handle. So I don't want to, I don't want to speak out of turn, because Jim's not here, so it kind of makes it difficult to really say anything.
Because I don't know what his whole thought process or his arm is either, so.
Yeah.
What I was going to suggest is, because they're suggesting you go back to Parks and Rec, we can do it as a policy that we don't have to actually vote on, therefore, I can talk to Jim, I can talk to the two of them, and we can come up with a policy for Parks and Rec to put into effect that will alleviate any ideas of who's in charge of what.
Okay.
That's all okay?
Yeah. And just so, I mean, I know the public's here, but we'll say the public knows, like, this last year alone, there was 122 events on city properties, so this forum will be getting a lot of uses, not like just three or four events that you see on Market Street or the riverfront, there are many different city properties that get used, so.
That's, that's the reason for why we are going through this right now.
Yeah, yeah, but just so like the public knows, like, I know there's only five people here, but, I mean, seven people, but just so people think, oh, we're doing all this, but no, there is a big process.
Yeah, there's a lot goes on in the city and, and, yeah.
Yeah.
Gosh, just let's make sure that DPW's kept in the loop there for any type of streets.
You talked to Jimmy, he's in charge of it.
I'm not in charge of the streets.
Well, he's in charge of letting you know.
He's in charge of asking whether he follows it, and I mean, that's. We may have conflicting things that are going on.
You guys can, you guys can find it out.
That's all I'm saying, I just want to make sure that we, we work together, that's how, make sure everybody gets their part. I think, I think.
I'll make that part of the call.
I think part, I'll make that part of the call. Yeah, like I said, just, that's.
As part, as part of the process, we don't get a form, everybody would get a form on that, that's.
I thought that was already part of the process.
Yeah, it is, and like I say.
No, it's not, it's because there's many events that happen, I'm not being aware of. I think the part, that part of that policy needs to be department heads, every department needs to be made aware, because there's kind of people calling us, like, hey, there's something, I'm not knocking, but I'm saying, I think all the department heads need to be made aware, so there is, so we, we're aware.
Yeah, just your heads up.
On that note, chief, another thing that happens a lot too, is there also should be some kind of emergency at these events. And I don't think the emergency service are notified all the time.
Well, I know what you're saying, the, the proper heads need to be made known, so we can make sure we have, you know, proper, places, protocol in place.
Yep. Any other questions about that topic? Alright, the next one, the spray-in bed liner for, I can kind of speak about that for Councilman Ister. The new truck that they ordered, it did not come with the spray-in bed liner, and obviously, it's nice to have that for the bed liners, just so you don't scratch them, ding them up, so I'll just bring it up for this, this discussion, doesn't know if everyone knows what's going on with that, any questions, anyone?
I actually met with him on Friday, the general manager, Justin Crouse, is actually starting to do it, and without getting the truck done, before we bought our big bed, so I have to work with duty there.
We are, there's a, some, probably a place behind parents, where some, there's some, probably a little here and that, so.
Alright.
Just, I don't, I don't.
Alright, so there are a few announcements, accepting letters of interest to fill the vacant three-year term on the Board of Appeals in the R. Interested, letters can be sent to C. Clark or J. Barnhart at summerypa.org. The no parking ordinance will be back into effect on March 15th. Once again, the no parking ordinance will be back in effect on March 15th. Each cycling event will be April 8th from 10:00 to 12:00 at the James R. Ister Community Center. Commercial inspections will begin mid-April, and solicitor Lee has had a comment on this?
Yes, the commercial inspections, there's been some misunderstandings as far as the enforcement portion of that ordinance, and the idea of the ordinance is not that citations are going to be issued and it will go in front of District dresses to me, there will be no, nothing going in front of District dresses to me, that's not even in the ordinance itself. What will happen is that certificates of occupancy will be either suspended or revoked based on the commercial ordinance, and I just wanted to make that clear at this meeting, because there has been some misunderstanding on that topic that I've been going through.
Thank you, sir. The Summery Summer Kickoff, that will be held June 3rd, once again, it'll be held Saturday, June 3rd. Our first volunteer meeting will be this Wednesday at 5:00 PM in the mayor's office. He's beating me to the punch, so that'll be this Wednesday at 5:00 PM for the first meeting for the Summery Summer Kickoff. Next city council meeting will be held here at City Hall on March 13th at 6:15 PM. And is there, is there any public comment at this time?
Mayor, just real quick, just so everybody understands, a no parking ordinance that starts from March 15th, that includes the street sweeper that will be running, that's one of the aspects of that no parking ordinance. So just so everybody's aware, pass it to your neighbors, we're not doing warnings, and we are starting enforcement on, on March 15th. So everybody understands that, put it on your Facebook page, tweet it out, I don't care what you do, just so everybody understands that starts March 15th.
That's 9 to 12.
Well, there's these streets, where you're at, there are signs everywhere, we have, schedules, hundreds of signs. Schedule's on the city website also.
Any other public comment, please say your name, sir? Uh, any other public comment, please say your name, sir?
Um, well, Summery, I want to make a couple comments on this event calendar thing.
Okay.
The first thing you wanna do is get a calendar for it, now, the city has certain functions it puts on during the year, they should go on that calendar first, okay? There's other organizations that have yearly the same thing here, and they should, consideration given to them, to get the, the, they want. Anybody else, whatever, you gotta start organizing that.
Well, in the past, uh, Mr. Bubba, to say, um, if we did organize it like that as you suggested, and also, when the events come in, obviously, it's first come, first served, other than, as you said, the yearly events, things like that, so, there was, you know, some organization like that in the past, but they said they're gonna help make it better, so we continue to move. Any other public comment at this time, any other public comment? All right, I adjourn this meeting.